Okay, good evening, folks. Welcome to the October 24th meeting of the Norwood Zoning Board. This meeting is being recorded by NCM and also on GoToMeeting. I would ask at this time that everyone's silenced and electronic devices. And before we begin, just want to explain the format for tonight's hearing. All parties wishing to offer comment and testify on matters before the board, ask that you approach the podium and state your name and address for the record or what entity you're representing. The applicant of any proposals this evening will go first and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. During that period that they are before us, the board members can ask questions during, before, or after. And then at that point, we'll open up the meeting to members of the public and any elected appoint officials who wish to comment on the applicant. And again, the board can ask any questions and address any issues. And any issues, questions any person might have, please address through the chair. And then at that point, we'll ask the applicant to comment on any comments he or she may have. And then the board can decide to continue the matter or vote on the matter and or close the public hearing and vote on the matter. If the board chooses to close the public hearing, they can proceed to deliberate and vote for the proposal. So this evening, we have five cases before us. This will be the order. We'll take the Hill Street first, and then we'll take Moderna Way, and then we'll take Norwood Park South. And then we have two hearings for 61 Endicott Street that because of two hearings will save for the end. So Case 23-32, 101 Hill Street is a special permit. And I will read the notice. And if the applicant's here, they can come up to the podium while I'm reading the notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 24th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the request of Michael, and I always apologize ahead of time if I pronounce someone's name wrong, Baller, regarding property located at 101 Hill Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, in the general residence zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, and will be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to Norwood zoning bylaw Section 5.4.4, nonconforming structures to reconstruct the third floor, resulting in addition to the existing single-family residents that would create an increase in floor area that exceeds 25%. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. And plans are on file with the application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals that may be requested by emailing C P E D at norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Welcome. Yep, name and address for the record.
Would you just do a quick sound check with Al?
Okay, Al, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and just thank you. And just for everyone sitting for this hearing tonight via GoToMeeting is Al Porra, regular member; Mary-Kate Daly, regular member; Joanne Powell, alternate member; and Dan Disdoro, alternate member. And my name is Mike Sheen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Michael Bullier, resident at 101 Hill Street.
I am Catherine Bullier, also resident at 101 Hill Street.
Very good. And just tell us what you'd like to do here on 101 Hill Street, folks.
Sure. So 101 Hill Street is a single-family home. The proposed renovation will add a third floor of habitable space consisting of 625 square feet. On August 14th, the home was placed on the renovation alteration due to the pre-existing nonconforming status of the structure. The residence located at 101 Hill Street are home does not conform with existing setback regulations due only to the location of the existing front porch. Therefore, the single-family home is pre-existing nonconforming. We recently welcomed a third child and are looking to add additional living space for a growing family and acknowledge that, you know, the renovation, with the exception of the pre-existing nonconforming status of the structure, will conform to all other laws and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. I just asked one question. You're just adding dormers, correct?
Correct.
The footprint's not changing. You're just adding dormers.
Correct.
Okay. And 624 is the additional, and I'm looking for a number you might be able to help me. What's the existing square footage?
The existing square footage is 2,000.
1732.
1732, okay. Thank you, Al. That was Mr. Porra providing that information. We'd just like to, when we make our decision, announce the percentage. Okay. Al, do you have any questions for the applicant?
The new child, older girl.
Good boy.
Eight months old.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Mary-Kate? Oh, sorry, Al.
Norwood. At this point in time.
Mary-Kate?
My main question was just confirming the current dimensions and square footage. The property card showed 1732, but the drawings indicated the 2506. It looks like there had been an addition since the property card. It looks like the rear of the house.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I think that was not shown on the property cards. There's just a difference there.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to confirm that the numbers on the drawings were correct.
Yeah, those are correct. And that addition was in 2019?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay.
And that was by right, I'm sure. What was that number again?
Total square footage?
Yeah.
Twenty-five oh six.
Twenty-five, okay, great. All set? Mary-Kate?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Joanne?
I think you touched on it already, but I just wanted to clarify. What is the current? Could you describe the current shape of the roof? It looks like you're just lifting up. What's there?
Correct. Yeah, so adding dormers and obviously making sure that, you know, the height of the roof and the pitch conforms with, you know, Norwood regulations. But that's actually adding the dormers and making sure that all of the other dimensions are conforming.
And is the ridge height changing?
The ridge height? That I'm entirely not sure of.
No, the ridge height is showing. The ridge height is showing.
Yep, the top, the tallest point. That stays the same?
The slope. Yeah, the slope is changing, yeah.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Yep. This is actually a good drawing of it. So it stays the same.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Dan, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Folks can, oh, I do have a letter from the Building Commissioner Gary Pelletier. The proposed expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling by 25% of the existing habitable floor area requires a special permit section under 5.44. And Gary's going off of the assessor's records as 1732, with the expansion 626 and the increase of 36%. And that's, he attached the assessor's record for us. And the building official would support the granting of a special permit in this instance. No other comments or feedback. That's from our Building Commissioner Gary Pelletier. Okay. You folks can have a seat, and we'll open up the hearing to anyone here that would like to speak to this matter of 101 Hill Street. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone at GoToMeeting that would like to speak to this matter of 101 Hill Street?
I'll say only one more.
Okay. Seeing no one. Any further comments from the board?
Do you have one?
I did have one, just on the question of the square footage.
Yep.
If it truly is the 2506, I think that ticks us below the 25%.
It does. It's 24. It's 24.9.
Is that finished space? Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's 24.9. Which is interesting.
Round it up.
Yeah, round it up, yeah. So I think we still should vote on it. And if it's not necessary, would they have to file this decision? They wouldn't, right? If...
I think the relief would be appropriate because you can only go with what's on the records.
Yeah, okay.
And right now, the assessor's records don't show that.
So we'll go by the assessor's records. Okay.
But I think it's an appropriate note, and we'll pass that along to the Building Commissioner.
Yeah.
I imagine at a reassessment of the property at some point, that square footage would be incorporated as well.
Yeah, that's the bad thing.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Any other comments from any members of the board? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Made by Mary-Kate. Is there a second?
A second.
Joanne has seconded. Because we're at GoToMeeting, we have to do the roll call. Dave, Dan, sorry. We're closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Joanne?
Yes.
Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes, and the public hearing is closed. You have your sheet there. Would you just mind covering that? I can cover it. So just in the guidelines or the criteria is to grant a special permit. We've got some guidelines that are criteria. There's obviously no one here that spoke against it, and it does serve a housing need of a growing family here in Norwood. So it meets the social, economic, community needs. There was no change in the traffic, as there's no change in the footprint. There's no change in the utilities of the public service. There's no environmental impacts with this, and it's compatible. I went by there today myself. It's compatible to the other homes in the area and the land use individual compatibly. And there are positive impacts to the benefit of the town in regards to higher assessment, which will give us higher taxes. So I feel for all those reasons, it meets the criteria. So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the special permit as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
It is seconded. Dave?
Dan.
Dan, I'm sorry. Dan, you second voting yes to approve this?
Voting yes.
Yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. Good luck, and all works out well for you. Thank you. Yep, thank you. All righty. I'm sorry. I wrote down the volume here, Dan, so I won't have to worry about that happening again. Okay, the next hearing this evening, we're going to do Case 23-351, Moderna Way. This is also a special permit. The applicant's going to approach the podium while I'll read the hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 24th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. in the request of Joshua Ames, representing Moderna Inc., regarding property located at 1 Moderna Way, Norwood, Mass., 02062, in the Life Science Development Zoning District and the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass., and will also be available by remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw Section 9.2.5(c) and 9.2.5(g) for storage of toxins or hazardous material in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals that may be requested by emailing C P E D at norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Jim Jackson. My address is 10 Lincoln Street in Foxborough.
Welcome.
I'm a power corporation representing Moderna.
Very good. Okay.
We do have a PowerPoint presentation. Is there a way to plug that in?
We do, but...
Can you email it to me?
Oh, it has to be emailed to you?
I'm out of USB ports.
Oh. I can probably do it. Just a sec.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, while waiting, it was one of the most thorough applications we've ever received, at least as long as I've been here. And it took me a couple hours to go through it, and you folks are doing some amazing things up there. And the safety issues are really covered very well upon anything that could happen, which we don't want, but very good application. So you don't have to go through the whole thing because we do get out of here at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we won't try to. We'll go quick. We'll go through the whole lot.
But I appreciate, I appreciate the effort that was put into this.
S T I X.
And we do have representatives of Moderna here, Josh. Joshua.
Hi, Josh. Welcome.
Debbie Donovan.
Welcome, welcome.
They'll be available to answer any questions.
Okay. Yep.
In the presentation, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Al.
In the presentation of the Moderna representative here is something we should be looking for for all applicants coming in for a complete package for the board to review, in my opinion.
I concur. I concur with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're waiting, I will read that the building official, Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner, did weigh in on 1 Moderna Way. The building official would support the granting of a special permit in this instance. No other comments or feedback. Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. Let's get that out of the way.
Yeah, I guess I can get started so we don't get too...
Yeah, yep, that's good.
So basically, we're here, I mean, you explained, you know, it's part of that Water Resource Overlay Protection District, which is a lot to say. But, you know, we're here because of the zoning regs require a special permit for the storage of hazardous materials and hazardous waste on the site. And Moderna does have, you know, their operations do, you know, generate some hazardous waste that has to be stored and disposed of properly. So they're consolidating on the campus on the site, and they just wanted to get up to date on all their permits. So that's why we're here tonight. There's no change to the operations or anything that we're considering tonight. It's just, these are the materials that they've been working with as far as they've been...
This is really helpful.
Asking for this approval of a special permit. You can probably put through the first couple. Yeah, so this shows where the Moderna site is on the zoning map, and that's in Area 3 of the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Here's a table explaining, you know, from your bylaws that explain the reason we're here for the special permit. And then the next one will show a map. This is just kind of an overall map of the Moderna campus in Norwood. We have MT, on the top left corner is the MTC North building. Below that is MTC South, and then on the right is the MTC East building. And it's all, you know, one campus. I click over to the next one, and this is just showing the whole campus and where some of the materials are stored. And if you jump to the next slide, it goes individual through the buildings. And this shows the areas, the orange is the lab areas with some goods, where they exhaust some fumes. The blue areas is where they're storing the waste material. And then the red is some of the hazardous material storage areas. And it's all within the building, except for those exterior, there's some off-ground fuel tanks on the top left of that one in red. It's, you know, all within the buildings. It's smaller quantities. It's under 55 gallons, everything. Click to the next slide. This is just showing MTC North, the same material storage. And then the next slide is MTC South, the storage. You can jump to the next slide. This is just what we identify as some of the potential concerns for, you know, having the materials on the site. Flooding is an issue. We've, you know, we alleviate that by having all the buildings outside the 500-year flood zone for, you know, for this reason and for other reasons. You don't want the boarding building or the Moderna facility to be anywhere near the floods. And then also spills and leaks, the, Moderna has standard operating procedures for handling any hazardous materials and hazardous waste. And they work with contractors who specialize in dealing with these materials, you know, in the delivery of the materials and then hauling the waste offsite. So that really prevents the spills and leaks. Fire would be another hazard. The Norwood Fire Department would be responding to any kind of incident on the site, whether it's a fire, spill, they would be notified immediately, and they would respond immediately. So there wouldn't be, you know, anything that Moderna would be handling directly themselves. They would always let the fire department know. And they have an environmental spill response team who would come to address anything. Jump to the next one. This shows the flood areas. There is the Planting Field Brook that runs through the middle of the campus, but all the buildings are well outside of the flood zones for that. Jump to the next one. This is the spill and leak prevention. They do have Triumphor in, is an environmental firm who's there on site for environmental response, and then they have response crews who can be called in if there is a spill. So they handle the hazardous waste disposal from the site and any kind of spill response. Next slide. The fire response, I kind of said earlier, Norwood Fire Department would respond to any fires on the site, and they're, you know, they're familiar with the facilities and the materials that are stored on the site. Next. This one is, kind of goes through a lot of the documents that we sent, and I don't want to go through them again, but they do have, you know, standard operating procedures. They have training records for all the employees who handle hazardous materials. They have a contingency plan, emergency action plans for if there are spills or any kind of incident on the property. Next slide. That's it. Okay. So just any questions? We're available to answer any questions if you have.
I saw Matt Ross's name a lot there. Is he here? He's did a lot of these emergency plans.
Matt actually is on paternity leave.
Oh, very good, yeah.
He was laying a little early, so he was...
No, that's okay. That's okay.
He's in the year, let the baby...
I want to compliment him. He did a very thorough job on the plans. Okay. Okay. Al, any, you're all set, sir? I'm going to ask the members.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Al, any questions for the applicant?
The only thing I have a question on, he said no more than 55 gallons of storage of hazardous materials. Is that maximum for each of the three campuses?
No.
The answer was no. Yep, yep. Name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Donovan, and I live at 30 Harrison Avenue in Newport, Rhode Island.
Okay. Welcome.
I am the Senior Vice President of Environment, Health, and Safety at Moderna. So Matt's on my team, but...
Okay, good.
...from Northern. Each individual container is no larger than 55 gallons, but each storage area has maximum quantities as well. So we do have...
In those, huh?
I'm sure they're on the plans, right? The, what's in each storage area?
Yeah, we do identify, yeah, on the plans.
Yeah. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Al, it is indicated on the plans. I didn't print the whole thing out, but I did review everything, and there is, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but it is limited to each area depending on, I think, the operation and the size of the lab is just, I'm assuming, in regards to that. Yeah, okay, yeah. So to answer your question, Al, it was included in the plans.
Okay.
Okay. All set, Al?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary-Kate?
It looks like the frequency of disposal is pretty frequent. It's not sitting around for weeks or months.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, my...
Yep.
Joshua Ames.
Moderna, that's good. Thanks, Josh. You're the applicant. We have your name here.
523 acre row, Northern Mass., right down the street. So yes, as a large pointy generator, we are allowed to store waste for up to 90 days, but given the frequency of materials that are brought into our waste rooms, we should put like twice a week usually.
Great. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Great. Joanne?
She just skipped my question.
Yeah, Dan? No questions? Okay.
Just a couple of things that I have. When you're, is there a route when you're bringing hazardous material to the site and when you're leaving the site? And my concern is, you're not driving through the neighborhood. You're going down Washington Street to...
It goes down Upland.
Everett Street.
Everett Street, yeah. Everett Street, and then you're on the highway, right?
Correct.
So none of the hazardous materials driving through any neighborhoods? Okay.
It goes right out from, most of the material is shipped out from MTC South, comes up and around down Moderna Way to Upland, and then down and right.
Okay, yeah, okay. And I know there's controlled spills and biological spills. An uncontrolled spill, I know, is, just kind of run me through it. An uncontrolled spill. I was reading about it, and just, if you could.
Yeah, so all of our staff are trained to sort of respond to sort of incidental or smaller spills, controlled spills, right?
Yeah.
Anything over that threshold is where they need to activate, you know, our emergency response team, get T I involved, and sort of scale up. And those are all inside of the building.
And does the, at that point on the uncontrolled spill, is that when Norwood Fire gets notified?
It would have to be a drastic uncontrolled spill, but yes, that would be... Then they would have to get involved.
Okay, yeah. And just because this is the zoning district and Water Resource Protection Overlay District, to your point, I noticed on, and this is just a, this is just a comment and a suggestion. You certainly did a great job, but on releases in that district, you have a list of departments, obviously, all of the Norwood and the natural gas suppliers and things like that. But because, this is the call-down list now I'm referring to on page 25, I would just ask that you include the conservation agent here in Norwood because it is the Water Resource Protection, and just make sure that that person is aware that there's been a spill, so just...
Yeah, she's actually on-site every other week for us right now, too, given all the instructions and then what happens and associated with it. I think that's a great call.
Yeah, if you could just, it's this page, 25 here. Okay. Right, well, that's all I have. Thank you. If you want to have a seat, we'll see if anyone from the public wants to speak on this. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board on this matter? Is there anyone at GoToMeeting that would like to address the board on this matter? I did read the letter from the Building Commissioner, and... Yes, sir. Please state your name and address at the podium, sir.
Steve Esco, 14 Endicott Street, Norwood District 5. I was just wondering what the fire chief, which his involvement in all of this, whether he accepts all the criteria that's been put forth here.
Do you guys want to answer it? It is, it is in their, their plan that the fire department has reviewed all of their plans, their emergency action plan, their spill release plan. action plan, their spill release plan, but if you guys want to address and confirm that?
Yeah.
Yep, if you wouldn't mind just confirming that for Mr. Esco.
Yeah, we're in constant contact with the fire department. I was just speaking to the fire department a couple of weeks ago to see if they wanted to have an onsite tour and we're trying to engage him as much as possible. I'm assuming all of the departments reviewed these applications as well, so I'm assuming that he didn't have any specific comments against the application as well.
Just one more question.
Yes.
I just would like to know what type of waste material is this, if you can identify it.
Yeah, no, of course, and I think I actually called that out even in the application.
It has been called out.
About half of our waste is associated with corrosives for cleaning of our apartment, right, where it's an aseptic process, so a lot of it's called cleaning the laser set. So it's about 50% of that is, actually, can even go right to our wastewater before it gets shipped out.
That's good.
Good. Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. And if you would like a packet, we can provide that to you. If you want to look into it more thoroughly, we can provide that to you. Is there anyone else here that would like to address? Yes, please. If you would like to come to the podium, Judy?
That's all right.
Yep. Just your name and address, Judy?
Judith Howard. Tell me, District 3. How many times a year will you be coming to notify the town about toxins or hazardous waste material? Have you done this before?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, no, so this is a special permit required to, as a large pointy generator, we would never end up coming back for an additional special permit in police correct me if I'm wrong, if Moderna for some reason left the site, this isn't inherited by the area.
By the mix.
Yeah, so this is district to Moderna with our safety controls, with our programs, buildings, et cetera, et cetera.
Have you come for a special permit before for this type of... Just to check.
Well, it's an overlay district, so it...
Right.
Yeah.
But because it's toxic?
Right.
Because it's hazardous and because it's in the water and the planting field is running right there, you know, you have to ask how often will this happen?
We can supply you with the complete 300 and something pages. They're very, it's very impressive what they're doing there, not only what they're doing and developing, but it's very impressive, the safety and emergency action plan they have in place.
Are the neighbors notified?
Everyone's notified, yeah, according to the board's list.
I just want to add one part.
Yeah, if you just come to the podium, yeah.
Just one part that may assist. So the material is stored inside the building.
Right, inside.
In containers, the room itself has containment as well.
Right.
So it's a dig or a bund or in some cases it's a trench. So if there's a leak in the room, we're trying to keep it in the room so that it's not, you know, kind of run out outside. So we have quite a bit in place.
Of security.
To make sure that if there is a spill, it is contained and doesn't get to the environment.
Thank you.
It sits on a spill recovery platform, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to, oh, any more further comments from the board before we have a motion to close the public hearing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate. Dan, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dan. Al, we're closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board? I think that they're asking for a special permit for 9.2.5C and 9.2.5G for stored detoxes, amorous material in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Obviously, there's a great economic and community benefit to this, not only in Norwood, but what they do around the world, the circulation up there. I will tell you, the security is very good. I tried to go up there once and they stopped me, so the security, the security is very good, but I did get through and the circulation is very good. There's no utilities and public services required. The environmental impacts, as they had stated, everything is kept inside, they have spill recovery platforms if there is a spill, and they have a very good emergency action plan in case of a spill that I believe has been approved, they wouldn't be here if it wasn't approved by the fire department. Land use is compatible and visual compatibility and obviously there's been some great benefits to the town having Moderna here, not only for the tax base, but also I think for kind of town branding, so I think it meets all the requirements that we need. Is there any comments or would you like to move to a vote?
I'd move to approve the special permit as presented.
The motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Joanne beat you to it, Al, but I'll give you the first vote. Al?
Yes.
Yes, Mary Kate?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And the chairperson votes yes. Thank you very much and best of luck. We are going to take Norwood Park South at this time and that is case number, that is case number 23-37. I will read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the request of David Hearn Jr., F. Clapp, on behalf of 1144 Properties LLC regarding property located at 115 Norwood Park South, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the Boston Providence Highway Zoning District. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. And this application requests a special permit under zoning bylaw section 5.2.2 to allow a change from one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use of medical or dental laboratory and clinic. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend and make their matters and views known to the board and the plans are on file. With this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, it may be requested by emailing C-P-E-D@norwoodMA.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM, 4:00 PM. Dave, just before you start, we had a similar case to this that affected this and also that footnote 12, and I had just asked the planning department if they would consult with the planning board because, as you know, this was a new ordinance, a lot of time and effort went into it and my concern was that this, and I believe it did, but I wanted to hear from them that it may be a ten, and they took it up at their meeting last night. So I will just ask Sarah to comment on that at this time, if you wouldn't mind, Sarah, and then David, you'll hit the floor.
Thank you. So the planning board was presented with an informal discussion of footnote 12. We provided some context, recent applications, this one included, that have come before the zoning test in the building department. And the planning board discussed, you know, the original intention of the footnote, which is a relevant conversation in part because relief, when you consider it, relief, you're required to think about and contemplate what the intent of the bylaw was. So the intent of this particular footnote was to preserve the most visible space adjacent to the right of way for those businesses that would benefit from visibility from the public right of way. Language that the bylaw uses is retail oriented, but it's not, of course, specific just to retail businesses, but as defined by those uses in the use table, the types of uses that might benefit from a motorist driving by and being able to see the ground floor of a particular property and say, I'd like to frequent that business, or now that I know that that business is there, you know, I might go there. So that was the intention of the bylaw. The planning board did receive a copy of the October 18th letter from Gary, who's also in attendance this evening and I'm sure can answer any questions you might have. And they agreed with his assessment that since this structure, and I can limit our conversation to just 115 Norwood Park South for purposes of this evening, that that would be eligible for consideration for a special permit under 5.3.2, since the structure itself predates that footnote 12, which was inserted in the Boston Providence Highway rezoning effort just a couple of years ago. So I think that's the general summary of planning board's comments. I mean, of course, zoning board has its own authority to review this matter, but I think planning board was in general agreement that that special permit avenue might be appropriate.
Okay. And just on that note, the building commissioner did supply us a comment on this. The applicant requires relief from the 100-foot ground floor setback restrictions on allowed use in the building, and Fisher would fully support the granting of relief in this instance and no other comments or feedback. Gary Dell Pelletier, Commissioner. And is it safe to say the planning board endorsed the building commissioner's, okay, endorsed it?
So the planning board didn't make a recommendation specifically on how you should vote on this application.
Okay.
But the October 18th memo that Gary had provided saying that a special permit under 5.3.2, that would be an avenue for relief to be considered, since this was a preexisting nonconforming structure.
Okay, okay. I want to thank you and Holly and the planning board for, you know, looking at that because for us it was the first test of a zoning change that just occurred a couple of years ago, that a lot of effort went into it by your department and you and the planning board members, and it was a town meeting vote that was almost unanimous, so I just wanted to make sure that folks that wrote this, we met the intent. So I'm satisfied with what I've heard, but Dave, go ahead, please. Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is David Hearn Jr. I'm attorney of Gellman and Cabral, 30 Wallbrook Street here in Norwood. I'm here this evening representing 1144 Properties LLC, which owns the property, is 115 Norwood Park South. With me this evening are two principals, Frank Gilroos and Blue Falcone. The property in question is a building that's been in existence for a number of years and was recently completely renovated to the point that the outer walls were replaced. And in the course of that, my client has entered into lease arrangements with two different medical practices that planning was set up on the first floor of the property, on the easterly side, which would be the Route 1 side of the property. Building permits were pulled several months ago that showed what the use was going to be, including medical offices and all that. And then recently a question was raised that brings us here tonight. I'm familiar with the other case that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I represent the tenant in that case. Mr. Almeda represents the property owner. I wasn't available, but my office did cover the hearing and I had submitted a memorandum to the board. We'll come back to that one in December. But this case, we've submitted to you on the basis of requesting a special permit under section 5 of the zoning bylaw, and specifically I refer to section 5.2, which deals with nonconforming uses. Prior to the change of zoning for Route 1, which I had been an advocate for for 12, 15 years with predecessors of the current planning board, prior to that change, when we created the Boston Providence Highway District, this property was owned as LM, a limited manufacturer. Within the limited manufacturing district, medical offices, medical clinics and laboratories were allowed as a matter of right. Once the Boston Providence Highway District came into effect, they were no longer allowed, but there was a predecessor tenant of this space in question that operated the laboratory. And so that use that they had, which had been a permitted use, it's a matter of right, became with the creation of the Boston Providence Highway District, a nonconforming use. It was no longer permitted, except by a special permit. And that was because of the footnote 12 provision. My client's proposed use, a medical office, a medical clinic, is the type of use that was allowed when it was in the LM district, but once it became part of the BPH, Boston Providence Highway District, it became nonconforming. So I presented the case to you and as a case where we are proposing to change one nonconforming use to another nonconforming use that is not more detrimental to the character of the district in which it is located than the existing use, or in this case, the predecessor use. A medical laboratory becoming a medical office and clinic, one nonconforming use for another. That's under section 5.2.2. Now, I appreciate Mr. Pelletier's comments that lent support to the argument on that. He's also made an argument with respect to nonconforming structure. I'll take relief any way I can get it, but I don't necessarily agree with that analysis. I think the use is the issue here. The bylaw prohibits uses within 100 feet of the district. And it's the use in our case that became nonconforming because of the change of zoning. But, you know, as I said, we've got a positive vote, we're happy with that, but that's why I focused on that and that distinguishes it from what you heard a couple of weeks ago and I want to put that aside completely tonight. So my clients have spent hundreds upon hundreds of thousands of dollars or more, they told me I could add some zeros to it, but they spent significant amounts on a building that fronts on Norwood Park South. It has an address of 115 Norwood Park South. It touches Route 1, the property does, and so technically it's a corner lot and corner lots have two frontages and two side gutters. But if you look at the definition in the bylaw of lot frontage, it refers to the boundary of a lot, putting on a legally and physically accessible street. And it talks about measuring the, how you measure the required frontage, measuring on the street which has been designated as the frontage street by the owner, or failing that, has been so designated by the inspector of buildings. In this case, everything that relates to this property bears an address of 115 Norwood Park South. My client considers it that, the deed refers to it that way, the assessors' records refer to it that way, and the building permits issued by Mr. Pelletier's office refer to it that way. This is not a property that would benefit by or really should be in the same category as what footnote 12 was intended to do. It's not on Route 1. You'd never find it. It wouldn't be used for retail. It's not the type of property somebody's going to drive by and say, oh, there's a retail operation, I want to pull in there. You can't. The property is actually about 12 feet lower than the surface of Route 1. You couldn't access it from Route 1. You can only access it by coming in to Norwood Park South, which is a development with office buildings and a couple of hotels, and the only retail is on a building, in a building that fronts on Route 1, that faces Route 1 and has Route 1 address. So this is a case where I think the board can look at it as a special permit to take one nonconforming use preexisting and allow it to be changed to the new proposed nonconforming use. And historically, both of those uses had been allowed prior to the rezoning. I think this is a case where the intention of footnote 12 was clear in the minds of the authors and I helped in a lot of the work for the BPH District, but there are always some little glitches that arise and I don't think it was intended. If we're going to look at intent, as the planning board was talking about that last night, the intent was to protect those sites from on Route 1. One of the big concerns is, you know, we didn't want any more car lots other than the existing ones, so that Route 1 would have an attractive field for retail uses and other uses like that. It's never going to happen in Norwood Park South because it's not on Route 1 in reality. It is technical, but the reality is you're never going to get to it from Route 1. You only get to it by turning into that roadway. So if you look at the considerations for special permits under the bylaw, this isn't going to create any traffic problems. The road is adequate, has been adequate for 35, 40 years when that development was first laid out. There's no drain or concern about adequate utilities, no concerns about public safety, adequate traffic flow and all that. It helps the town by providing services that are in demand, medical care. It helps the town by increasing the value of property and generating more tax revenue. It's an appropriate use in what is essentially an office park with a couple of hotels. And I say to you that I think this is a perfect case for the board to look at it and say, we'll take that old nonconforming use, turn it into the new one and give them the special permit that they need so that they can continue with this use. Looking at the practical aspects of it, looking at the equities of it, and this was all done in a very open and appropriate way. My client's been working with the building department with all the permits required and has had a great relationship with them. Looking at the footnote 12 and what it's trying to do to preserve frontage area on Route 1, this doesn't really have, I think you can say this is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, detrimental to the district. In fact, it's an approved, a building that they have taken that was, needed some updating, needed some modernizing, and they've done that and in the course of it, they bring it up to current codes. So I'd ask you to support it and grant the special permit as we requested.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. I did just want to make for the record the letter dated October 18th, 2023, from Gary Pelletier, our building commissioner, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I will read his last paragraph, because I think it's a more powerful statement than the one I read earlier. As indicated prior, although unable to issue building permits by right due to the footnote 12 restriction, I would support the issues of a special permit in this case, as both uses clearly allowed and appropriate for the district, respectfully, Gary Pelletier. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
I appreciate the statement by Mr. Pelletier.
Yep. Stay right there. Any questions from the board for Mr. Hearn?
Is the lab business still continuously operating?
No, they left.
Oh, okay.
And then we reeded the space.
Okay, I see.
And a couple of medical practices that are coming in to take that space over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Al, do you have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Hearn?
Mr. Chairman, not at this time.
Okay.
I think it's been quite a comprehensive presentation.
Right, yeah. Gary, I did read your two letters. Do you have any other comment you'd like to make? And thank you again for attending this evening, Gary.
Yep, no, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Yep, no, I think, I think we're all in agreement that this is sort of a complex matter, but I think it, whether or not it is a nonconforming structure or a nonconforming use, in either case, I think it's appropriate to, you know, be considered for a special permit. Attorney Hearn, I can discuss that ad nauseam, you know, at a later date, but I think in either case, it's appropriate.
Thank you and thank you for being here this evening.
I would appreciate a different language phrase, but thanks, Gary. I would appreciate it a different language, but thanks, Gary.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone here? Ms. Homewood from the planning board, thank you for attending. If you would like to, just you can approach us from there.
I'm not representing the planning board.
Okay.
Coming out of 49 Beach Street.
Okay.
I appreciate Mr. Hearn's specifics, because it's very helpful. Not a lot I could answer that. And I agree with everything that everybody said, and the reason we had footnote 12 and to grant a special permit, so we had more eyes on Route 1, because I think all of us that live in Norwood appreciate if Route 1 gets a facelift. And that is my point over and over. That was my point when we started this 12 years ago, how many years ago?
At least.
If it could just look a little nicer for all of us to drive up and down it. So I think this is a good use. I think the reason we have the mechanism of a special permit is, and every case is separate. Last night, we all discussed this at the planning board. I don't agree that any kind of medical use is retail, but I don't disagree that this is a good use of this particular, this particular product. So I won't belabor it. Just do that.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for attending this evening.
If we all keep our eyes on it, we'll get a better product.
Well, it was the first test under the new zoning, so we wanted to make sure the intent was there. Okay. Is there anyone else here from the public that would like to address this matter? Anyone on go-to meeting that would like to address this matter? Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Joanna, Dan, any questions?
Yeah, I'm going to check with them right now. Yep. Any further questions from any members of the board?
I just wanted to follow up, just to confirm that the prior nonconforming use was abandoned only, it ended only because of the renovation? Is that, it continued up until the point of the renovation?
They were leaving. The past owner was Stevens Company.
Okay.
And they consolidated to the facility up the street, and we purchased the building from them.
Okay.
Just if I could name an address for the record, sir.
Frank Julio, 100 Ledward Place, Rock.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dan, anything else?
No questions.
Al, anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I think you've done a great job down there, and I agree, there is a big drop down there, so it's good. Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate, seconded by Al.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Al, on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I go, yes, the public hearing is closed. I think Mr. Hearn did a great job. Shouldn't tell him that. He might send you a bigger bill.
I would have been back for a time that you think I don't do a great job, so I, it's nice to hear it much, Al. Thank you.
Covering everything that is required by us in the work going down there, obviously, I would say it's more than a million, but that's just my opinion from this business. And obviously, that's going to add, I'd get in touch on the fiscal impact, that's going to have a fiscal impact, and I think you did a good job covering everything. So I think it's appropriate, but what are the wishes of the board? And we're voting on a special permit, 5.2.2, nonconforming use to another nonconforming use.
I would move to approve the special permit as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Dan has seconded. Dan?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And the chairperson also says yes. Congratulations, Homewood. Thank you. Best of luck. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Okay. Kate, the next is case number 23-3461 Endicott Street. Let me just make my notes here. Avina, advance for a special permit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead.
And this is completely at the discretion of the board, but I also wanted to suggest, was there an intent of the ZBA to consider issuing a special permit for that application under Section 5.3, nonconforming structures as well?
I saw, I saw that in Gary's letter to us. Well, Gary, Gary's here. Gary, Sarah had just asked, because in your letter from the 18th, you reference 5.3.2, that altered.
That's correct.
Yeah. Do you feel it's necessary that we should also take a vote on that?
I think it would be helpful, because again, it wasn't discussed, and I don't want to, I don't want to take anything away from Attorney Hearn's presentation, because I think it was very accurate. I think in this unique case, both could be applied, because as I think I pointed out in the memo, the use is allowed by right. What creates the issue is the 100-foot setback, and that's the building. The building doesn't, if you were building the building new today, and you intended to have that type of use on the ground floor, you'd move it a hundred feet back. So there isn't an option for that without severely restricting that use on the ground floor. So to me, it rendered the building, or at least a portion of the building, nonconforming. So whether it, you know, again, we could, we could go back and forth on 5.2.2, 5.3.2. I think in this particular case, and maybe others down the road, it is applicable for a special permit, because as was pointed out by the planning board representative, each case can be considered unique, depending on the circumstances, the building. I think you have to consider the building and the components of the building and where it's located. Does it have a second floor? Is it a single-story only? How much does it front on Route 1? I think there's lots of things to consider for the board. So I think it might be helpful to get an idea of how the board feels.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you again, Gary. So just on the recommendation of our building commissioner, also on our planner, we're going to take a vote on special permit 5.3.2. Dave, I'm sure you don't have a problem with that, just to cover all the bases.
We missed the discussion about also approving a special permit under Section 5.3.
So long as the, Mr. Chairman, so long as the decision includes 5.2.2.
Yeah, that one's made, so we're just, yeah, that's been voted on.
That's been voted on. If you want to do it for the other purpose, that's, you know, that's up to you.
I think that's the recommendation of our planner and our building commissioner. So I'll read to the board 5.3, and I'm reading just from Gary's October 18 memo to us. It's also in our zoning board, zoning book. The Board of Appeals may award a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a nonconforming structure in accordance with this section only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood, and specifically under 5.3.2, which we are going to take a vote on, altered to provide for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner or to a substantially greater extent. So it's definitely not more detrimental. They have put over a million dollars there, and it is bringing new business to the community. It is, in my opinion, obviously, it's a different purpose than previously, but it's not more detrimental. Any comments from the board after hearing from Sarah and from Gary? Okay?
No opposition to that?
Okay. So is there a motion to also approve a special permit for 5.3.2 for 115 Norwood Park South?
I would move to also additionally provide a special permit under 5.3.2 for 115 Norwood Park South.
Okay. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joanne has seconded. Dan?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And chairman votes yes. Okay. Thank you, and Sarah, thank you for bringing that up. And Gary, thank you once again. Public hearing, 11 minutes, okay. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 24, 2023. And again, apologize if I don't pronounce this correctly, on the request of Shal Lanina Baldo, on behalf of Avina Modern Event Space, Norwood Commerce Center, Regatta Property, located at 61 Endicott Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the manufacturing zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, also available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning by law Section 3.1.5.6 to open an event space under the commercial recreation indoors use. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence with the Norwood zoning by law shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are in file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing cped@norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Okay? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you could approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Shalene Balder, 28, Missy F. Brockton.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm requesting a special permit for an event space at limiting at 61 Endicott Street. The event space will cater to small-sized events such as birthdays, baby showers, graduations. I'm asking the board to grant me a permit under the commercial recreation use. This space is approximately 3,000 square feet, and I plan to invest in the space by putting central air and new floors. Most importantly, I'm preserving the look of the building. I believe this building is a great staple in the charter of Norwood, which is why we are preserving the rustic look of the space.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Yep.
Okay. Members of the board? Dan, any questions?
No questions.
Joanne?
I just had some questions about, it's an event space, and please correct me if I'm incorrect here. I believe you said the maximum will be 100 people for an event.
So I, I assume that it's going to be 100 people. I think my next step, if I do get a permit, is to get that with the building department. I apologize if I get this wrong, but I think I'm supposed to get a permit for someone to come look, to see how much space I'm allowed to have. I'm just assuming.
The occupancy.
Yeah.
And I think my question would be concerning traffic, whether it's people attending an event, vendors dropping things off, because according, if I'm reading this plan correct, there's just one, one door in and out on the front.
So there's, there's two loading docks with two doors. So I went there when it's the busiest time, and I don't believe that it will be any negative impact to traffic. And then some of our events could, so it could go from 12 to 3, or 7 at 12. So the 7 and 12, 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., I don't see any negative impact to traffic at that time. I went to the building at that time. A lot of the retail spaces at the building's not open around that time, so I don't see a negative issue to traffic.
Mary Kate?
I had similar questions. Thank you.
You'll say, yep. Al?
I got a few questions.
Okay.
Part of which is, there's no, no site map here locating this on the property?
Yeah, they are.
They find the building properly?
Just a point of information, Al, they have asked us for a waiver, so we'll be voting on that, if we grant the waiver or not. But go ahead.
And I'd like to know how they figure capacity.
Capacity? I would need to get someone to come to the building to look at capacity.
Yeah. I think it's time for them to withdraw their application and come back when they have a package that's usable for us to make a valid decision. There's not enough information here for me to make a decision for the use.
Did you guys have my business plan that I attached with?
Yeah, yeah. We did, we did review the business plan, and I think, and I also have this concern that there's a lot going on down there, and I've been down there a few times, and, you know, we have a music venue there that has 80 or so people. Tonight, this evening, there's a request to the Board of Selectmen for 250 people in a one-day liquor license at the arcade. So, and just to keep on that thought, if everyone has a big event the same evening, that's a lot of cars. And what we don't have, and I know that the planning department has been working on it with the owner, but we're kind of doing this piecemeal. We're kind of getting a few every time, and we're also always looking for the waiver on the certified plot plan. And I'll be honest with you, I was on the website, I've been down there a few times. I couldn't tell you what building is 24, 25, or 26. And I know this is not you. I actually, I know that, and, you know, and I really think there's, what you're doing is a good thing, and you've put together a good plan.
Yep.
But we have to look at it, what if everybody, perfect storm, and all, all the events are doing well down there?
Yep.
There's poor lighting, there's poor circulation, there's, there's a parking lot, it's very hard to see where everyone's supposed to park. And I've expressed this before, and I don't want to say no tonight, but I think you might want to consider, we'll hear from other people, that withdrawing without prejudice so that the, you can go back to the owners and say, they need this certified plot plan, and, but doing this piecemeal, we had, two, three months ago, we had a baseball, and it wasn't a big impact. And then we had the arcade, which was tabled, and now we have two this evening, and it's really, I think it's a great space, but I just, I'm not prepared. And I don't see that as any fault of yours, but I'm just not prepared. But that's my comments on this, okay? We'll hear from the public.
Gary raised his hand.
Oh, oh, yeah, Gary provided us with a letter, the building commissioner, the building regarding your space, the building official would support the granting of a special permit in this instance, no other comments or feedbacks. Gary Pelletier, Building Commissioner. And I have a great deal of respect for Gary. I think he does a great job and a great addition to Norwood, but I just have that concern by doing this piecemeal, but that's it.
Gary, I have his hand raised.
Oh, yeah, Gary, go ahead. I'm sorry, Gary.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to, I think, for, for the board, Al specifically, I think you had some concerns about the space. I've been in the space. I actually toured the space before, referring it to the board. It is a space that has been renovated, updated with emergency lights, means of egress. There is a common elevator, another common hallway, so it's fully accessible. That portion of the building is sprinkled. So the ownership has done a considerable amount of work to try to update the building. Unfortunately, I think the wrinkle here, and, you know, I understand the, the chairman's concerns and everyone's concerns to a degree, just wanting to address the building and the safety, you know, I think that that has been well addressed by the ownership and the management company. The site plan is something I think that needs to be addressed. I just, I don't think it's, I think it puts the applicants here who are applying for a special permit for a specific use in a bit of a tough spot, because it's not something that they can control. With regards to the occupant load, that would be determined by an architect based on the square footage and the use in accordance with the building code, they come up with an occupant load based on a factor. That's something that would be the next step for this applicant and the arcade as well. We just wouldn't, it wouldn't be addressed. I wouldn't issue a building permit for a change of use or a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of inspection without approval, and in this case, by special permit from the board.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Anything else? Sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't want to cut you off there.
No, it's, unfortunately, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg scenario.
Yeah, yeah. And I understand your point, it puts the applicant, but I feel that it puts a lot of pressure on us to approve these without even a site plan. And as I said earlier, I couldn't, if someone said go into building 24, I wouldn't be Norwood building to go in. Okay. Thank you again. Thank you, ma'am. We're going to open this up to any members of the public that would like to speak in this matter. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Yep?
My name is Toni Esco. I live at 14 Endicott Street, which is District 5, and I've lived on the street for 41 years. So I'm going to preface my comments with a compliment. The current investors, our owner, whomever, they are doing a greatly improved job since it reopened. As you know, there was a cease and desist down there. It was very sad that it had to culminate to that, because our neighborhood had worked very closely with the office manager and legal representatives way back. But to talk to the current situation, it is true that all, and it's not the applicant's fault, that falls. fault, that, that fault, you're looking at all of these special permits separately, and it's the aggregate that the neighborhood is concerned about, and primarily also because we were told so many years ago that we would get new sidewalks once the 112 new condominiums of Endicott Woods were built, and they have yet to be built, and I've been given long crime-related stories, and Mark Ryan knows all about it, and, you know, Endicott Street abuts the corner of 1A, which is State Highway, and that, I guess, has an impact, I don't care if the sidewalk has a car, just stop before 1A and build it. We have so many more young families now that live on the street in the condos, we see children walking home from school, carriages, it's really great to see, and several of them now walk to the pavilion that is on the conservation land near the top of Endicott Street. The issue here, and we've, and we go down there a lot, we have seen these spaces, and they are beautiful, as the building inspector said, a lot of them have been updated, but when you consider that you have what's nicknamed the fallout shelter, and the other music performance center, the fallout shelter's way over on the left, they can have a big performance going on too, and they have a license for beer and wine. Then you have the arcade that wants huge things, and they're, I believe, are contesting a refusal for a liquor license, I thought. And all these event spaces are going to want liquor licenses too, either one day, or beer, wine, or full, so when you look, if you look at them all separately, you could have a night with 1,000 cars down there someday, and we don't have any sidewalks. And Endicott Street's really the only way out, nobody, nobody zips up Harley Drive, they go up and down Endicott Street, and we need the sidewalks. And if there's anything buildings 23, 24, 25, and 26 need to do, is to put pressure on the powers that be to get the sidewalks, because it makes us feel unsafe there. I really don't know what the problem is, but it is a concern, and I know we're talking to the planner at a previous time, that there is a desire to try and look at a better plan so that you don't have to be always dealing with these special permits, but there are several floors there, and if everybody's asking for various kinds of event spaces and yoga studios and this, there's just so, the capacity for so many cars down there. The traffic pattern has gotten better, people are still confused about the one-way pattern, if you understand what I'm talking about down there, it's a very, it's still confusing for people who are not familiar with it, because when you come out of the road by the wall, when you're exiting, you're also parallel to the road that goes into Endicott Woods, and if you're on the dock, you can, if you don't know the neighborhood, that's confusing, and I'm really surprised somebody hasn't been head-on down there. But we need the sidewalks, I'm going to say that publicly, I know it's not your job, but it is an issue as you look at these applicants separately, and again, not your fault, but I personally believe the owners and the investors of that property need to put pressure on the powers that be to get sidewalks on the street, and I do get concerned about overflow capacity for cars. If, if you have a confluence of several events on the same day, you know, where's the parking going to go up the street? I don't, I can't recall if there's been more pavement further back behind the buildings for parking lots, but it's a lot of parking that you're considering when you look at all of this piecemeal, so you do have a difficult job in the end, but as a resident there who is really seeing the neighborhood change and the traffic change, the lack of sidewalks, because sometimes he just rolls right to the sidewalk, there's like no berm, you just need it for pedestrian safety and carriage safety and bicycles. So, so the concerns we have are the population increase for the vendor spaces and the event spaces, and entertainment, and liquor licenses, and the volume of the, the whole area for buildings 23, 24, 25, and 26. And there's four, four floors, five floors?
Four.
Four floors. I mean, there's a capacity for a lot, a lot of people down there and more, because there's acres of land behind there. I don't know what the future development plans are of the owners, but the capacity for future build-out is there, and we want it to be successful, and they are doing a great job. But we do have an issue in it being the only exit is Endicott Street, and I've talked to the planner, when we first moved here, you could go down Endicott Street and cross the brick, actually drive over the brick and go up Davis Avenue and come out on 1A. And that's a conversation where eventually somebody's going to talk about too, talk to the coming owner of the end of Davis Avenue, see why something like that can't be done. But eventually, exiting from that property, when you have multiple events perhaps going on by coincidence one night, is an issue, and maybe more rear lighting too. But the traffic pattern is improved, not perfect, but improved.
And are you still a town meeting member?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, yes, sir, name and address for the record.
Steve Esco, 14 Endicott Street. To appease my wife, I concur, most of her comments. I've been staying on top of the sidewalk issue, and I know it has nothing to do with this particular application here, but I was curious, because I took a tour of the whole building myself, because I haven't really seen it in its full capacity, all renovated. They have done a remarkable job. I was just curious, this applicant was, has a space of 3,000 square feet?
Yes, it's approximately.
Yeah, 3,027 square feet.
So I was just curious as to, in what building was the 3,000 square feet in?
On the fourth floor, building 24.
24, so that's the second one from the right. That's a, that's a big space, I don't remember seeing a big space, but it's one big room?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't remember, go, I was going by each individual space, you can't see inside all of them, because they've got locked doors on them and whatnot, but that's, that's a big space, that's bigger than my house, 2,400 square feet, so I mean, to be on one floor, 3,000 square feet, I can't imagine just having a capacity of 100, I mean, that's, I can't even imagine the other place having 250 in the, the.
Well, that's, that's the application.
I know, I know, but that's the, I'm concerned too of too many functions going on at the same time, being with the, what's it called, the concert place there?
The fallout shelter.
The fallout shelter. So, the point was brought up by my wife, and it's, it's a valid point, of so many functions going on at the same time. I know the shops aren't open at the same time that the functions go on, but there's something there that has to be addressed, and I think you're, you're on the right page with getting the full scope of the layoff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this matter? Yep, yep.
Chairman, the record, David Herron Jr., 30 Wallpole Street. I happen to represent the folks at the Commerce Center, I'm not here on their behalf tonight, but I do have some information that might be useful. There are presently 415 parking spaces there, and we have room for another 149 or so on a plan that we're working on. That would bring us to 564 spaces in excess of what we believe would be required based upon the uses, based upon the parking table, 425 spaces. So you have to think about the types of uses, and I understand the concern the board has, and I'm not speaking for my client, I'm just trying to give you some information and draw a parallel. The Space Center, if you look at the parking requirements and the actual use, many of the uses that contribute to the calculation of how many spaces you need are uses that don't overlap. People who work in the Space Center or work in the Commerce Center during the day leave at the time that places like the fallout shelter and the vent space and other spaces are coming into use. So I'd ask, I think you can take that into account. But I understand the chairman's suggestion also, that in some cases, people might want to withdraw our application to live to fight another day, and rather than have a negative vote that leaves them barred for two years. We are looking at, and there have been references to this, we are looking at coming in with a proposal that requires an awful lot of engineering work, an awful lot of expense on the part of ownership, to put together the types of plans that are necessary, to do something that would involve a general special permit, so that you're not turning around every time you have a meeting with two or three applications from individual tenants. It was done at the Space Center back in 2016, it's been very successful, it's worked very well, and this is the type of thing we're looking at now at the Commerce Center. So, but that's, that's a little ways down the road with, because it requires an awful lot of preparation, an awful lot of plans, a great deal of expense, and I don't want to stop these tenants who want to move in either. So I appreciate the situation you're in, but, and to Mrs. Esco's comments about if you have a busy time there with somebody having a function, the fallout shelter doing something, I mean, you look at the, you look at the schedule of minimum requirements for parking, it depends upon the use, but a place of assembly, one parking space for every three people, so it's not three spaces for three people, it's one space, and those are based upon pretty good estimates of how things go on. One parking space for the commercial recreation for every two people who are participating, one space for every three people who might be spectators, if in fact they have them. So you've got your work cut out for you, I just wanted to give you the facts in terms of what we do have for parking now based on the existing plan, and we expect we'll be back before some board down the road, I've talked to Ms. Dixon about it at length, and we're continuing the conversation, so.
No, no, I appreciate it, and I know you're working on it, and, you know, you gave a good example, the Space Center, you know, they had the horse before the cart, in this case, it's the cart before the horse, and they're coming to us piecemeal, and there are concerns, and I, and I know there's a lot of parking there, but it's not clearly delineated, it's very confusing, it's not well-lit. Are all these uses that have come before us, I think, good uses? Yes, I think they are, but I don't think that property's prepared in the shape that it's in now, and that's why I think we need that plan. As I said earlier, Dave, they're seeking a waiver for the certified plot plan, as every applicant has, and I could not tell you, I know Mr. Esco could, but I could not tell you what building is what, because there's not, it's not marked properly, so I think you're on the right path, I know you're working with the planning department, and I'm told, you know, you're getting to that point, and I just think, well, I would tell you right now, where I'm coming from, just so people understand, I'm not prepared to vote for this this evening, either of these petitions that are before us, and I think that the best thing for the, and just me, but they, you know, there might be other members that feel differently, but that's where I'm at, so you know me, I tell it the way it is.
I'm not, Mr. Chairman, I'm not representing either of the applicants, and I'm not taking a position for or against, I'm just trying to say, make a couple of points, and you mentioned the cart before the horse, or the horse before the cart. One of the factors that comes into play always is that when you have to do these things, there's a great deal of expense involved, and this is a sensitive site in many respects. There have been issues in the past that they've worked very hard to ameliorate, and I appreciate Mrs. Esco's comments and Mr. Esco about what they've, you know, what they've seen in terms of improvements, you have to have tenants in there to generate the money that pays for the improvements, and, and so it is a question of chicken and egg too, to switch from one animal to another, so.
Dave, I'm doing three projects right now, and I made a comment to Ms. Dixon, I hope she didn't take it the right way.
She didn't take it the wrong way.
I hope she didn't take it the wrong way, is, is, you know, before Abington, the city of Boston, twice, and doing a permit also in Braintree, 180 Allen Street, and all of this is required, and we don't have any tenants in the Abington, and I'm on my third time around, now we're counting trees. Ms. Holwood would probably love that ordinance, I'd better not tell her about it, but I understand the expense, Dave, but at the same time, we have a responsibility to the public, and we got to meet that, so.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate your comments, and I know you're working on it, and I know the planning board will give it a good review, and I want that place to be successful, but I just, piecemeal process is big for me, I think you know that, doing it this way, I'm not comfortable with, so I'll leave it at that.
I'll turn the table on you and ask you a question. Your suggestion is that they may want to withdraw without prejudice to protect the right to come back at a later time.
Correct, I do not want to shut them out here this evening, I do not, and that would be my suggestion, but, okay, there's four other members here, and let's, let's talk, let's listen to them.
And I'm not taking a position, and I'm not offering advice.
Okay, no, thank, thank you, I understand. Okay, we're still the, open to the public, is there any, anyone else here that would like to address the board on this matter? Is there anyone on go-to-meeting? Okay, so I think everyone knows where I feel. Al, you want to comment on this, and you're, we'll go right around the horn here.
Mr. Chairman, you heard my statement initially when we talked, I was the first one to speak. I cannot support that tonight, the way it stands.
Okay.
I would be a vote, I would be a no vote.
Okay, thank you. Mary-Kate, any comment on what's before us this evening?
I would have been supportive of the application, I think it presents a need and meets some of the special permit requirements, but I can understand the challenge that you're presenting tonight, and to understand the, not wanting to vote tonight on it, and to be able to come back to some resolution at a future date, I can understand and be supportive of continuing or withdrawing without prejudice.
Okay, yep, yep. Joanne?
And my concern is, it's an event space, so I'd really like to understand the occupancy that's intended for it. Being an event space, I think the traffic issue, the comings and goings, I, I know it's tough, because the applicant is not entirely in charge of that, but the applicant could maybe work with the building owner to come and present a plan to us and say, here's how it would be handled, here's, I would direct people to park here, or just whatever, present a plan to us as to how that might work. I did very much appreciate the applicant's business plan, I feel like there's a lot of thought into that, so I hope that with additional documentation, it could be successful.
Yep, and I do agree, it's a great use, and the, the work has been done inside, but it's the outside we're concerned about. Dan?
I think I would be inclined to support the special permit, understanding the concerns that were raised by the chairman and some members of the public. You know, I, the way I look at it is, it's a space that, it's sort of in this transition phase where they're trying to get more tenants, trying to get more, you know, business there, and I think as that happens, there's that possibility of, you know, addressing some of the other concerns that were raised by people tonight.
Great, all right, thank you. We always give the applicant an opportunity to, you heard from the public, you've heard from the members, if you want to approach us and either comment on this, or seek how you would like us to, kind of advise us how you would like to move forward. You do need four votes of the special permit.
No, I totally understand, I feel like I was set up to fail, obviously.
Well, I hope you don't think that was from us, and I think as everyone has expressed, we think your business plan was very thorough, we think there is a need, and I know the work's been going on inside that the building commissioner spoke to, but it's just a concern of the neighbors and of the number of events going on, and it's piecemeal, piece being piecemeal, and there's a better way to do this, so.
Yeah, I totally understand, I can't speak on the building, but, so what is my option, just so I can fully understand?
You can withdraw without prejudice, and that means that you can come back before us at any time. If you move for a vote tonight and you do not get the four votes, you cannot come before us for two years, and that is not my intention, and I don't think that's the intention of anyone here, and you've heard from the representative who wasn't here officially tonight, but they're working on, I think, what we need here, so.
Okay, yeah, so I'll withdraw.
You would like to withdraw, so is there a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Moved, made by Mary-Kate, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Dan, Dan, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes. Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mary-Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
I vote yes, so you withdraw without prejudice, and you can come back to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. That was a hard one. Okay, the last hearing this evening is also 61 Endicott Street, case number 23-3761 Endicott Street, Apora Health and Fitness, also a special permit for the same location. Give me one moment here, and I will read the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on October 24, 2023, at 7:00 PM, on the request of Marina Becker of Aporia Health and Fitness regarding property located at 61 Endicott Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the Manufacturing Zoning District. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit under zoning bylaw section 3.1.5D6 for commercial recreation indoors in the manufacturing district. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals. this application. The office of the Zoning Board of Appeals may be requested by emailing CPED at norwoodma.gov, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
If you could approach and say your name and address for the record, please.
Marina Becker, 95 West Street, Vol. Massachusetts.
Hi, Marina, good evening.
Good evening.
You have heard the comments from everyone, you concernly proceed.
So, um, what I do is boutique boxing and fitness, um, my classes don't get anywhere larger than 10 to 20 people, um, most of my fitness is one-on-one. I have between 10 to 12 classes right now, which are nowhere, like, in the zone of anybody of the businesses actually operating, so my classes finish on Friday at 9:00 AM, and then I think Wensmith is open from 10 to 5:00, so the only things that I have between those times are one-on-one sessions, and then after that, I have another class on Friday at 5:30, and then Saturday mornings, I also have classes that finish at 10:00, which is when the shops actually open, so I'm kind of like outside of the opening of the shops most of the time, but again, it's not more than 10 to 20 people, it's boxing, stretching, and personal training, and I'm gonna be doing yoga as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, anything, and, Al, I'll start with you. Any question?
I see this to be much different from the last case, Mr. Chairman. Again, no site plan, no location of the, where it's going to be set up, and I'm not ready to vote on a, a special permit tonight on that, same premise.
It's, um, so it's Building 26, and it's number 55.
Is that on your application?
I think I showed, I sent something in, yeah, I had like a, like a blueprint of the actual space, but Building 26, number 55.
Do we have any, sir? Just hold, just hold on a minute. I, I didn't see anything in the packet, was there anything that I possibly could have missed?
I have waivers for the floor plans in building.
I think I emailed you the, like, the blueprint, so I don't have any floor plans in here. I have a floor plan if you want.
Something.
Is there a, is uploaded by?
All right, uh, while we're waiting for that, Mary Kate, do you have anything?
Um, my main question was about the services offered, I think you answered that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mary Kate. Joanne?
Um, I think you answered my question, which was, you know, the timing on the classes, the comings and goings from a traffic perspective, and I would echo Al's question, just, I didn't have anything in here that located it within the complex.
Okay. Dan?
Uh, I don't have any questions.
Yeah. Um, I'll cut right to the chase, I'm in the same place I was in the previous hearing, you know, these continue, this is the fourth one, that comes to us piecemeal, and I couldn't, as I said earlier, find Building 26, and I think you have a great model, and I think there's a need for what you do, I, I just, I, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of this, uh, without, um, a, a, a plan of land that shows parking, and, and how everything's, the circulation's gonna work, and in my opinion, and it's not your fault, it wasn't the fault of the other applicant, but you don't meet some of the criteria's in the special permit, now that's just my opinion, but I'm in the same place that I was in the last one, I think some other members are there, uh, we can continue with, with the public hearing, uh, and we can hear again from the neighbors, uh, but if you, yep, so we'll, we'll continue with the public hearing, because I saw a member there, so thank you, uh, so we'll, Ms. Homewood, if you would, please, name and address for the record.
Is there a different way to, I understand your point, don't completely disagree, disagree a little, but not completely, this is an odd duck, um, if some of the criteria is met, which I believe it is, because it's a beaker dish down there, there's a lot of businesses, it brings people to town, it's, it's an odd duck, we have to take it as it comes, and again, we got the chicken and the egg, landlord's gotta do X, but the tenants are the ones that are being penalized, because they can't run their business. Is there some way we could do a hybrid? They could get a, a special permit for X amount of time until the landlord maybe does 1, 2, and 3. Is that something that's doable? You could give them a time limit, say, they could start their businesses with criteria, and then we check on it in three months, six months.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that?
Yeah, please, Al, go ahead.
Good evening, Mrs. Homewood, Al Coro.
I am.
Question for you. You now throw the burden, burden on the building inspector, when you say it's a two-year, three-year plan, he's now gonna chase to make sure this is in compliance, and he, not that he's got the time to sit around and do this stuff, we know he's busy with everything else. So, I, I, I appreciate the approach, is the planning board doing anything in that area similar to what was done on Moore Street? Have you given that some consideration?
It hasn't, we have, we have, but not to this case, and I, I don't, maybe I misspoke, not a two- or three-year plan, I'm just wondering, because, again, we have to take every cases that come, and this isn't, you know, Endicott Street is always been a weird little thing, um, Space Center is smaller, and it was empty to start, I, I don't, it's its own bird down there, and I'm wondering if we could be a little, not for two years, Al, maybe we could do something that, get the businesses started without the, the floor plan, the, I know, it's confusing down there. Is there a way to split this baby? Bad metaphor?
Well, um, well, I appreciate your comments, and the board has taken them, anything else?
Sit down and shut up?
No, 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 I never, I never, I never, never shut anyone off. Did you want to, okay, you have the floor plan, okay.
This is my question.
Okay. Well, we're doing that, is there anyone else that would like to comment on this matter, please, state your name and address for the record.
Mrs. Esko, 14 Endicott Street. So, I, I'm not against this particular, uh, applicant here, uh, for any reason, I, I would, just would like to know, though, what is the square footage of this space that she's gonna be, where's your way? Okay, thank you. Um, to me, I'd be acceptable to, to this type of, uh, function going on with, in a lot of people that she expects, and it's, um, going back and forth with, with their clients, it's onesie, twosie, they're 15, 20 at, at most, so, um, far different than the, the, the other functional type of space that was being applied for, not knowing what the capacity is, I really, really would like to know just the capacity, first of all, and then if the building inspector approved, approved it, that 50,000 number, I'd be okay with it, too, but, like you said, you have other issues that, as far as a, a, a plan goes, could be afforded, but.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? Anyone at go-to meeting that would like to speak to this matter?
Gary.
Gary, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I, I think one of the, the things that the board might consider, because again, I, I think the applicant makes it very clear that the class size is very small, and mostly one-on-one, and I think, um, there is relevance to the hours of operation, that's always been an issue, um, based on the uses at that location, and I, I believe that the board would have, um, the purview to include conditions upon the issuance of the special permit, um, for instance, um, maximum class size, hours of operation, things of that nature, so I, I would just, um, make a recommendation that the board consider that as part of its discussion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Gary. Anyone else at go-to meeting or here? Okay, would you like to make any final comments, Ms.?
Just, like, I, like, I'm gonna keep the classes small, they're always small, I like to keep it boutique style, I'm not interested in making, like, crazy style classes, like I used to teach 50 class, 50 people at once, so, I'm just trying to keep it boutiquey, just having everyone kind of enjoy the fitness aspect of boxing, so.
Yeah, all right, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, um, Al, you're, any, any, open for the discussion here, um, Al?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Mary Kate?
I would be supportive of this one as well.
Okay. Joanne?
Um, in general, I would be supportive of this as well.
Yeah, Dan?
I'd be supportive of this as well.
I am supportive of it, but I'm not gonna vote for it. I think that we need a plan, these one-offs, and, and I think you got a great business model, I think you'll be successful, I, I think it's up to the landlord, he's gotta provide us with information on circulation, on parking, on lighting, on drainage, on everything, a project of this aptitude has to have, and, and, and I just can't move forward on this this evening, that's where I'm at. If you want us to go forward, we can, or if you, like the other applicant, you can withdraw without prejudice, and it doesn't affect your rights to come forward to us another time.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, is there a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Kate, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Dan. Al, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Uh, Joanne?
Yes.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, it's been withdrawn without prejudice. Uh, one thing, I have to go back, I didn't close the public hearing, so you can ask that question, I guess, correct, I forgot to close the public hearing, but we did take a vote.
There was a request or a draw the application from the applicant.
What's that, I'm sorry?
The request came from the applicant to withdraw, so I think.
The, the public hearing is still a little bit. Yes, sir, if you can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mike Collier.
Good evening.
I'm a structural engineer.
Okay.
I guess I'm just trying to give her direction, it seems like this is a big facility that the owner is responsible for, you mentioned parking, occupant load, drainage.
Yeah, it's a big facility, you're correct, and we have these requests coming before us, piecemeal, and, you know, 10 goes to 20, to 20 here, to 200 here, 100, and we have no, we've never been presented with a plan, it's not their fault, I, I agree with them, and this has been.
The way it's being, so the, the space right now is permitted for, all occupants are permitted for the.
From, from my understanding, yes.
So the parking is, is adequate, the drainage is adequate, everything you've mentioned, she just needs direction.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the, in my opinion, it doesn't meet the circulation, because there's a poor plan there, and, um, the direction would be to go back to the landlord and say.
What being right now, as is, it doesn't meet, or just with these additional occupants, it wouldn't meet it?
I don't even know what the, Mr. Hearn has given us a parking spot number, but I haven't seen a plan that verifies that.
Right.
I, I've been down there myself, the lighting is very, very poor, and if there's 300 cars there, and someone comes running out and gets hit by a car, it's not gonna be on me.
No, 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 I'm just wondering how the space is.
Did I take a crack at?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, because I provide these explanations a lot about zoning, it's complicated, I get it, um, so you're talking about two different things, right, there's the uses, and then there's the structures. So the structure, these buildings have been renovated, and they've been inspected and permitted through the building department against building code requirements, to make sure they're safe, the sprinklers are in place, right, so that's a separate set of permitting. When a tenant signs, uh, you know, a lease for one of these spaces, we're talking about uses. So the bylaw, you know, gives allowances to any variety of uses that are permissible or not permissible in any of our zoning districts, and so for this particular zoning district, these particular uses require an extra level of review in the form of the special permit. So, the board here is tasked with, um, deciding whether or not the uses meet the criteria of the special permit. Now, that special permit criteria fundamentally boils down to, is it more detrimental to the, the area than, than what is there, and the bylaw asks the board to consider a series of, of conditions in its findings, and some of those are related to traffic and circulation, and it, it gets to that general question of, is it detrimental? So, I think what I heard the board say is they, in these cases, maybe don't have all of the information to make that call.
Right.
So that's what the review is for the special permit. Now, above and beyond that, um, there might be something called a site plan review, that the planning board might do, uh, that really gets into those technical details on reviewing the drainage, and, you know, the more technical aspects of that, um, and that's kind of the process that we've been trying to engage property management with, and property ownership, uh, to get to a, a major project special permit, which would kind of address the whole package, and also that, the site plan review.
Yeah, you know, she, she answers on that on the paper for a space to, and, fine, but she, she's put in a spot where she's getting no direction on what she needs, and it seems like it's going back to the owner, who, and it sounds like there, there's no plot plan, there's no, there's no survey plan for this property?
It's, it's required, and we haven't received anything.
So you don't have any, you don't have that, and is, is people permitted to use this space without that, or, or moving forward, would you want that?
So again, the, the survey, uh, for a site plan, that would be needed in that full site plan review, and that's kind of what's being asked for here.
Right, so it seems like that's on the owner.
Would have the, the striping of the parking, you know, spaces, it would have the, it would have a landscaping plan, it would have the location of signage, or, you know, the, the patterns of where the one-ways are, just kind of where everything is.
So it seems like it's on the owner, or the property maintenance people, we poorly sought advertising to rent this space, if they, they should have a space that meets your requirements, whatever it might be. I'm just trying to give her a direction, it sounds like this is, uh.
Well, I think you've answered the question, it's on the landlord, go back to the landlord, and say, we were at the Board of Appeals last night, and the two folks that were before us wanted to see some more information from the landlord, and I know that.
Right, I understand, you have all these different uses, occupant load, ziggurat, parking.
We're not talking about occupancy load, that's up to the building inspector, we're talking about use, and, um, there's, they're coming in one, one at a time, one at a time for these special permits, and if we prove them all, we might have a, as Mrs. Esko said, we might have a thousand cars, and we just don't know, and we have no parking plan, we have no circulation plan, there's no signage, you answered your own question, it's on the landlord.
Okay, no, I think it would be good if she had that direction before she came up to the podium, that's all I'm saying. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir, and, look, I, as I've said earlier, I thought both of these are good uses, it's just that there's not enough information here, uh, what's there, and we have, and I, we have a, a, a arcade there that's looking for a liquor license for 250 people, there's a music studio there that gets 80 or 100 people, and I can tell you, I was there on Saturday night, they're very crowded, we had an application for 100, and then we have all the smaller things there, that 10, 20 people, and the parking is poorly lit, and it's not, it's not, uh, marked correctly or clearly, and that's all we're asking for, and if we can get that, I think we can get to your results, what you want. Uh, thank you. I didn't close, yes, go ahead, Dave, yeah.
I think these applicants, uh, are looking at it, that this board has approved other tenants there, and there have been tenants going in there over the last few years, and I repeat what I said before, that, you know, which comes first. Uh, if you don't have tenants, you can't do the work, you can't make the improvements. Um, the question of plans, we're working on plans, and I've had discussions with Ms. Dixon, and suggested ways that this might go. Um, those are complicated proceedings, and it's very expensive proceedings, and require a great deal of engineering, but if certain tenants have been approved, I guess what you're doing is drawing a line in the sand, saying, no more tenants, even though the tenants that came in tonight don't necessarily tip the balance so badly that there's a significant amount of congestion or anything like that. I will tell you that I'm, my quote of the numbers was from. numbers was from a plan that is the draft plan, and the spaces have been counted. So I'm not able, that plan is not yet signed, but those numbers do come from a draft plan that I have been reviewing recently with our team. So speaking, not really for the ownership, but maybe to some extent to say, ownership has certain responsibilities, and they have undertaken those responsibilities in fixing up the building and doing what they can. But at a certain point, you can't build all these improvements unless you get some people coming in there as tenants. And that is a place that the tenants change. Remarkable Cleanouts was there for years, and they moved out over the last several months. They were a very busy operation. That busy operation is gone now. You get somebody who wants to move in with a relatively low-impact operation in terms of the current applicant. The prior applicant, I understand there were concerns. Nobody really knew the numbers. So I'll make my personal pitch for the present application, not on behalf of ownership, but looking at this as, looking at it from a practical point of view. Small use, small impact. And if you want to announce that going forward, you're not going to authorize anymore, that may be a perhaps more fair way of doing it until certain things happen that people in Town Hall want to see. We're trying to work with Town Hall, and we haven't had any disagreements. It's a question of getting the stuff done that has to be done. But, you know, I appreciate some of these people feel they've got the rug pulled out from under them when they've made these applications, made these plans. If there's going to be a policy that we're not going to allow anymore, maybe. But we're talking relatively, particularly the current application, low impact on the neighborhood and on the property. Thank you.
I disagree with you. And the Space Center had no tenants, and they presented a very thorough plan for the planning board to approve, and they had no tenants. I'm on some projects now. There's no tenants. There's projections and things to do. And this, don't put this burden on me and this board. This burden is on the property owner. That, but.
I'm not putting it on you.
Okay. A motion to close the public hearing? Mary Kate, will you make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved to close the public hearing. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Joanne. Deanne?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mary Kate?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the public hearing's closed. The only thing we have before us, thank you, everyone, the only thing we have before us is the minutes, but should we hold off on the minutes? Because Mary Kate and Shannon are not here, and Paul's not here, and they might have had, and Rachel's not here, and they might, oh, Mary Kate's here, sorry. Rachel's not here, but they might have some comments on the minutes, so. Yeah, so we'll hold off on the minutes. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mary Kate to adjourn. Al, would you like to second that?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Motion to adjourn's been made. And second, Al?
Yes.
Al, thank you for attending tonight. Gary, thank you for attending tonight. Mary Kate?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
And Deanne?
Yes.
And thank you for attending tonight. You're first meeting, and Joanne, you're second. And I vote yes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.